Okay, good evening. This is the Rutland Town Planning Commission and it's January twenty-six, twenty twenty-three. And we're gonna start with a public hearing tonight on an application for subdivision in the town of Rutland. So let's jump into the public hearing. Um, Mark. Can you pick him up there, Bill, pretty well if he sits? Okay, what is, uh, anything changed from the last time?
So, um, Howard had mentioned last time I was here about the right of way, if parcel A was gonna have access to that right of way. At fifteen feet. And I talked to the landowner, we didn't have it on there before. He's good with granting the right of way from parcel A through parcel B. To that right of way that's on Killington Heights property. So I just, that's the only change I made. I believe everything else from last meeting was good.
Yep, okay, so you've asked, um, for some waivers. Um, you've asked for, um, a waiver on the identification of zoning districts. Yeah. One for, uh, other essential features other than what was listed before. Which is parks and open spaces and drainage systems, et cetera. You asked for a waiver on locating all trees on site. And why is that? The, why did you ask for the waiver on trees?
Because it's foresting.
Okay.
That back five acres is all forested.
Okay, and you asked for a waiver on number twenty. Contour lines based on accurate ground surveys.
Yeah. I mean, at, at the point where if we ever do anything with that back five acres, obviously, there'd be contours, we'd have to come back in to present. If we were gonna do anything with it. Right now, it's just a vacant piece of land. We're gonna leave it that way for who knows? There's no plans.
Okay, and a couple more waivers, um, twenty-three, bridges or culverts. Preliminary designs, not applicable, really.
Right.
And twenty-four. All parcels of land proposed to be dedicated to public use and the condition of such dedication, so that's a waiver because it's not applicable. Okay. Okay. So you know about the plat requirements?
Yes.
And I don't see any public in person or online make any comments. Let's just go through the forums here. The application is complete. Cover letter. Are those number of pages after that, Bill? Do you know? It says cover letter and one, two, or three?
Forms, one, two, and three.
Okay. Forms received. It was just one cover letter, right?
Yes.
And what's the cover letter for the second forms received, one, two, and three?
One is, what's, the first set is what's required, and the second set is what did we, what did you get? So if you only required like form, the cover letter and one and two, that's all you got, and that's all you need.
Okay. Date of initial hearing would be one-twenty-six. The permit fee was received, um, the filing fee. Is that still applicable?
Filing fee would come when they bring the mylar.
Okay. So the preliminary plat meets all requirements. Question for the group. I'll take that as a yes. Final plat, we don't have. Any other comments by anyone? So ninety days from now is?
Be like April twenty-sixth or twenty-fifth or something like that.
I'll have the plat in here.
Okay. But we're gonna have something for the paperwork.
April twenty-sixth.
Four twenty-six. Okay, does, um, the commission have any questions for Mark? Before we vote on? Any questions of us?
We need a motion, Barbara. I'll make a motion to, uh, accept the subdivision of Howard Smith for Route Four East.
Do a second.
A second.
Any discussion? Last chance for questions. Okay, all those in favor of approving the subdivision, please say aye.
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 Post. Okay, unanimous.
Thank you. Oh, I apologize for being late, I'll never.
That's fine, it was, it's an easy one, so we were able to go right through it, so yeah, thank you.
All right, thank you very much.
Nice to see you, Mark.
Take care.
Take care.
Okay, let's officially end the public hearing. And call to order the, the planning commission meeting itself, and, uh, let's do the pledge of allegiance, whoever. The top of our agenda. Pledge of allegiance.
United States of America, to the Republic, which stands
approval of the agenda.
First item of the The agenda.
Thanks Dana. Gary seconded?
Sure.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post. Uh, still no public out there. And we did make the decision already on the subdivision and under new business. And we're waiting for Kyle Madash to join us, the floodplain manager. He'll be joining us, uh, via Zoom. So if it's all right with everyone, we'll we could skip down to old business momentarily. And the first item there is the concern the VLCT has about the town's streets and sidewalks ordinance. Uh, the league thinks that it is, should be a policy rather than an ordinance. And Bill sent out, he gave us last time, and he sent out again the the kind of definitions that the league has for policies and ordinances. You instructed me to go to the select board at our last meeting, I haven't done that yet. The time just wasn't right, the last meeting. So I'll still do that. You know, and reading through this material, though, I'm not sure it really is just a policy.
Yeah, I share your opinion, Barbara.
Because you know, toward the, on page three, it says policies generally do not have the authority to provide for penalties or fines. For this reason, they're better fit to explain your internal administrative process or direct the behavior from municipal officials. On the other, on the other hand, if your goal is to describe a permanent rule, rule of conduct that creates liability or affects the people of the municipality in an important and material way, an ordinance should be adopted. Don't, caught your eye?
That's what come I, I put that this is a key focus, so, you know, everything that was presented last time with respect to it being a policy seems to be thrown out in the last line of this particular. But, you know, that did catch my attention. And then it says if you want additional, if you have additional questions relating to ordinances, policies, contact them, but they've told us they don't wanna look at it as an ordinance, so I don't understand. The only thing I could think is that earlier in the document, it says something about statutory authority, and if it doesn't provide statutory authority, but I thought that the, um, the regulation of, uh, of streets and sidewalks was somehow coming to us from the state, but maybe I misunderstood that a long time ago. Bill, can you?
Anything you wanna add, Bill?
Can you clarify that?
There, the document, I agree that the document the point is to, and they're, what they said to us kind of are in conflict with each other.
Yep.
So, that was their recommendation or their advice, we can choose to if we can choose to ignore it.
Right. And we can choose to ta- take it to the select board or, or maybe change that motion and not do it.
Well, given, since I was the one who made the motion.
Yep.
And since with the new information, and you haven't done anything, the new information seems to be conflictual, and I, I would have to retract, I would have to make a motion to withdraw or rescind the, um, the directions to the chair to talk to the uh, select board about making it a policy, because I honestly don't feel, based on this description, that it should be a policy. It seems to me that it should be an ordinance. The only question that is still in my mind is whether that, uh, ordinance has a statutory authority, or that we have statutory authority to to create an ordinance, um, or streets and sidewalks. I mean, I wouldn't have questioned that previously, but with the, my League of Cities and Towns coming back to us and telling us it should be a policy, I, I'm confused.
Yeah. Um, well, we, we don't have to do anything this evening. Uh, I can look into you know, what the statutory authority is for streets and sidewalks ordinance and report back next time.
Do you need, do you need me to rescind the, uh, previous motion? No?
At this point, n- n- no, because I'm, you may still want me to go to the select board.
Okay, and there was no timing on that.
Yeah.
Sounds good.
Okay, so we'll we'll put that one to rest. Uh, Kyle has joined us now. Kyle, thank you.
Yep, no problem.
Okay. There you are.
Are you ready for river corridors now?
Yeah, I think we are. Um, so this is Kyle Madash, and he's the floodplain manager for DEC in this part of the state. And he works with communities who are considering river corridors, um, which is the point that we're at. The select board asked us to look into it and do some outreach. I asked Kyle here to give us a little more background on river corridors and how they would fit into what we have now um, for ordinances and such and regulations. So yeah, you could take it away, Kyle.
Okay, so yeah, right now, um, you guys have flood hazard regulations from two thousand eight. That was at the last FEMA map update. Um, and now we're looking at updating them across the state just in anticipation of new FEMA maps and kind of keeping up with current, uh, times. So yeah, I'll go in, I have a, you guys can see my screen, I have a little PowerPoint. If I share the screen, you can see it.
We should be able to, and Bill, would you mind just?
Yeah, if you can allow screen sharing. It says host, post-disabled participant screens sharing.
Should be able to.
All right, let me see.
I'll try again, Kyle.
Yep, I think I got it now.
There you go.
Good?
Yep.
Okay. So floodplains and river corridors, just kind of a general background of what we're looking at, um, and the benefits that they provide. So water quality by having room and having, you know, connected floodplains and river corridors, you have places to filter out stormwater and contaminants from agriculture and things like that, uh, floodwater storage, so that, you know, is often associated with wetlands and kind of the habitats around the streams, so when a flood comes, these areas provide a lot of storage and take some relief of bridges and roads and buildings, things that are in the flood hazard area or river corridor. Uh, wildlife habitat. They're big areas for, you know, deer and bear and fish and amphibians and all different kinds of wildlife live in them. Beauty, they all kind of provide a beauty to the area, which I think we can all appreciate in Vermont. Uh, recreation, so hunting, fishing, kayaking, hiking, you know, any of that stuff. Community identity, a lot of people, you know, like I think of like the Baton Kill and kind of down in Manchester and things, people associate that with fly fishing and you know, different things. The Otter Creek comes through Rutland Town, so I feel like that's a big resource. And public safety, so they provide all those, those benefits and the safety of the public by you know, decreasing the risk of roads and transportation infrastructure and different buildings and, and things like that. So the idea of the river corridor is, once you get, you know, you have houses and things kind of in the around the corners of the river and, you know, in that area, the river becomes, the water wants to cut down and, you know, be more powerful and kind of wipe out banks and as that becomes more encroached, the water has less and less places to go. So this is kind of another slide showing how rivers move. You can see that blue is kind of the main channel, and then over time and different high-flow events, it jumps its banks and you know, moves around in this area, so you can see why it would be beneficial to keep your development, you know, outside the river corridor. Cause as you get, you know, things like down at the bottom there, you have a straightened channel that wants to cut down and, and be more destructive. So this is just kind of another one showing, uh, you know, how that river might move over time. So now, the big difference here, which I think a lot of people have some issues with understanding is there's the special flood hazard area which is regulated now by those two thousand eight regulations. This is all, you know, from FEMA, kind of a federally regulated area. It's tied to flood insurance, it's, you know, tied in that more federal sense, and then here is the river corridor, and that's, that's a Vermont mapped by the Agency of Natural Resources. And kind of the differences here are, the river corridor doesn't discern on elevation. So these are the areas that, these blue areas that would become inundated during a flood. So low elevation areas, areas kind of not too far vertically from the stream channel. And then that might differ where the river corridor, like say this, this yellow area is raised up higher outside the floodplain. And, uh, maybe this, this river here is gonna cut into the bank and wipe out a house, or, you know, something on that higher bank that you wouldn't necessarily associate with inundation flooding. But it is indeed an issue, like if you think of Pittsfield kind of up through Route one hundred there, or on the Mendon Brook, uh, kind of coming out of Mendon and into Rutland Town, we saw a lot of that, uh, during Irene.
Kyle, before you move on to the next slide, I have a question, this is Dana.
Yep, no problem.
So can you go back to that last slide briefly?
Yep.
Um, so from a layperson's perspective, is what we see here on the, uh, light blue shaded area uh, a similar representation to what we saw on the previous slides where the river could move over time? Or is this a separate, uh, representation of where a river might happen to flood?
Okay, so, yeah, so can you see my cursor?
Yep.
So from this line to this line is gonna be the river corridor. And kind of what that width is based on is the watershed area, so how much water is coming from up here? And then the width of the stream channel, and then it has a multiplier to how far out. You know, and that's recognizing that this thing can come up this way and go, you know, potentially out here and kind of wiggle wiggle through here like that. And then this blue go ahead.
Good.
Now, this blue line, you can see how it comes outside the river corridor, that's the flood hazard area. So it is a little wider than the river corridor at this location, probably because this area is much lower in elevation and closer to the river elevation. Whereas, you know, over here, it's outside the flood hazard area, this area might be twenty feet higher than the stream channel. So like I was saying, if that's twenty feet higher, you know, this house that's theoretically in here is high and dry. But if this river were to come and ebbles this bank, you know, all of a sudden, the corner of your house is ready to fall in the river.
Right. So I go back to my question, thank you for the explanation. I go back to my question about the, uh, correlation between this map and the previous two or three that you showed us. Is there one, or, yeah, those?
Yeah. So, uh, I, I guess, I don't know, I'm not sure what you're asking.
So we're, here you have the dark blue area, which is the, the general, uh, river uh,
Yeah, that's like the river channel, yeah.
River channel. And then you said over time or given changes or the, um, effluent that would be coming through the river, uh, and volume, that that the river could change, and then we have one that kind of makes it an A in the, in the middle of your screen there, that, that line crosses over there.
Yeah.
Is there a correlation between this representation and the one on the following slide?
No, there isn't. So this slide is really just showing like this, this tan area as the river corridor. And then like think of the river flowing this way to this way, and maybe say in the seventies, there was an event and it jumped its bank and did this. And then in the eighties, it went over here. And then in the nineties, it took this other bank, and now, now we're at this channel here. So what it's recognizing is, you know, in future decades, maybe it hops back to this area. Maybe it hops back over here. It's just recognizing that this can move around through time, through here. So it's worth not putting things in, in harm's way and just letting the river kind of have its space.
Thank you.
Yep.
Let's let Kyle, uh, finish his presentation here.
Yeah, if you have questions, I'm fine with going, you know, as, as, however you guys wanna do it. Um,
Go ahead, Kyle.
So here I have kind of a comparison of what the special flood hazard area is. And that's what's regulated now under your regulations, and that's, you know, what's tied to the federal piece. And then the river corridors, which is kind of the, the statewide Vermont thing. And, uh, that's, you know, another piece to the regulation. So, the special flood hazard area is mapped by FEMA at large scale. Um, I mean, some of the maps, you know, they just map them kind of going out from the side of the road, looking at what's low and kind of drawn it in like that, so they're often not that accurate, they're not the best representation of your actual flood risk. Mainly because they are focused on that inundation to a certain elevation, so they're just really recognizing how far water could come out from that stream channel. And that's primarily used to rate flood insurance, divvy out federal assistance, which is the main driver why we're regulating floodplains. You guys participate in the National Flood Insurance Program. You have federally subsidized flood insurance available for anyone in town. And that's why we're regulating the, the special flood hazard area. Now, river corridors are independent from FEMA or the federal space. And they're mapped by the Agency of Natural Resources. And they're focused on those erosion hazards and the channel movement, so they're not, you know, as focused on the inundation and you know, the house not being that far away from the water level. These, this is recognizing you know, those big landslide events we saw on the Mendon Brook and, you know, things like that, rather than the you know, something like the Otter Creek just raising up and flooding out your field. Um, and then the, the primary goal of the river corridor regulation is basically to avoid development in these areas that are prone to erosion. So really what you're doing is just keeping development out of harm's way, and then you're, you're eliminating those problems during a flood. So now I kind of have a comparison in between your current flood hazard area regs, and we have a standalone bylaw, which I have a slide about, and that, uh, is kind of something we came up with for towns without zoning, so, you know, sometimes when you have towns with zoning, they wanna do their own, you know, really work things into their existing regulations. We developed this as a way to say, hey, this is kind of off the shelf, easy for, you know, people to understand and, and adopt. So one of the big differences is the river corridors. There's none in your current, and there would be the river corridors now. And with the river corridor regulation, I guess, we're not you know, regulating recreation uses, you know, the more you know, open space type stuff, it's really about keeping those buildings and keeping those insurable structures outside of the river corridor. Um, and now we're back into the flood hazard regulations. So new construction or substantial improvement is SI. So what substantial improvement is, is, um, when someone comes in for a permit, they, uh, if the building costs are over fifty percent of what the building itself is worth, then you have to start looking into using flood mitigation measures to make sure that that building is safe from flooding. So we have in this new thing, it's, right now, you would have to elevate the low floor of that building to the base flood elevation. In these new ones, we add two feet above the base flood elevation, recognizing that the base flood elevation may or may not be accurate, so if you're adding two feet to that, theoretically, your new structure is gonna be safe by two feet of how FEMA has it mapped, so it just adds an extra level of protection to new buildings. Um, and then the substantial improvement, right now, you could come in permit by permit, and, you know, if it's fifty percent or less, then you don't have to call it a substantial improvement. This new bylaw says substantial improvement is calculated over three years, so what that really does is say you have someone's house and they're, you know, coming in for a permit for a kitchen, and then the next year they come in for an addition, and then the next year they come in for windows and you know, you piecemeal this project together, all of a sudden you have a building that's worth a whole lot more and a whole lot more to ensure. And under this new regulation, if you calculate it over three years, you ensure that. Those new buildings and those improved buildings are safe, safe from flooding. And then there's no, this new one has no net loss of flood storage capacity, so what that would mean is. If you are proposing to put a fill pad in for a. A building or driveway or, you know, something like that, you would have to remove the same amount of material elsewhere to kind of. Make sure that that flood storage is maintained in that area. The new one. Would prohibit new cr- critical facilities and material storage and junkyard, so critical facilities are like hospitals, schools, fire stations. Police stations. Maybe in a smaller town, there's only one gas station, like things that during a flood you're really gonna need. So you want to keep those out of. The flood areas. And also new structures in the floodway. Which is kind of that, the floodway is separate from the flood hazard area, and then it's the area right around the channel that. Has deep moving water during that base flood. And is kind of a a dangerous area when the water is high. And I think that our standalone bylaw more clearly defines exempted activities. Permitted activities and conditional use activities, so. As we've gone through bylaws over the years, we get certain kind of projects, like the new ones include restoration projects are exempt from permitting. You know, just a little more clear for the the zoning administrator. Or the administrative officer to kind of figure out what exactly needs permitting and how it how it should be permitted. The standalone bylaw, so it was created for towns without zoning, the higher standards we already went through. Add specificity, so that was kind of what I just mentioned with the exempted conditional use permitted activities. And then having these higher standards, so you know, the higher standards being the substantial improvement, the two foot. Freeboard, uh, the no net not what net loss or compensatory storage. That's having those. In your regulations and enforcing them is going to make you more competitive if you guys were to go for federal. Mitigation funding, or say you wanted to replace a bridge and we're looking for grants. Um, you know, things like that, a little more competitive by in the town that doesn't have the standards. And then the increased ERAF rates, which is on the next slide. So. I have another slide breaking this down, but right now you guys are at a twelve and a half percent. Payback for the emergency. So by having the river corridors in your bylaw, you will get five percent. And I have a better breakdown of that on the next slide. More competitive. By keeping, you know, by having the higher flood standards for new development and. Keeping things out of the river corridor, that's going to have less strain on your emergency services. And cleanup. Um, and it just creates a safer community and more resilient. Infrastructure for, you know, all the taxpayers. So here's kind of a, this is the Emergency Relief Assistance Fund. Kind of a theoretical payback out of a million dollar event. So out of an a million dollar event, seven hundred and fifty thousand is taken up by FEMA. And then if you are at the lowest standard, which you guys aren't, so you guys are at twelve and a half right now. So we're at a half split, you guys are paying half of that twenty five percent, and the state's going to pay half. So at a million dollar event, that's a hundred and twenty five thousand. And if you. Increase, if you adopted the river corridor piece, that would take another five percent. So in a million dollar event, you would take it down fifty thousand. So yeah, that's kind of the ERAF. Breakdown. And where that becomes important is, you know, say, this could be for a bunch of little events, you know, little things. Maybe one bridge gets taken out, or this or that, or. Say we have two big events in one year, you know, that's that's really gonna. Decrease the town's payout on, uh. On what that would be.
So that's when there's a federally declared disaster that kicks in.
Yep, yeah, federally declared disaster, and that is, you know, anything. And we tend to focus on floods in Vermont, but it really is the Emergency Relief Assistance Fund. So, you know, fires, like even COVID, I think had some play in these cost shares, so. It it isn't just for flooding, even though we really focus on flooding, because that's our. Kind of our biggest threat in Vermont. Yeah, that's what I have, I mean, uh, I don't know if you have any questions, or we can talk through. Whatever you want.
Yeah, any questions?
Can you go back to the previous slide for a second?
This one?
One more. No, that's fine, those those are good. Would you mind commenting on the use of the term bylaw? With, uh, compared to ordinance?
So. That I think is pure semantics, I mean, I know. Blood plane ordinance right now, but I think. This was created statewide, so generally I think we see the term bylaw more, so maybe that's why we use that.
So Kyle, everyone's got. An RRPC map of the river corridor and the special flood hazard area and the floodway. Uh, for the town of Rutland, they've. All got their personal copies here, and we've we've got a larger map too. You know, not a whole lot of surprises, um, can you explain the streams a little bit? I mean, of course, you know, we've got East Creek and Otter Creek. Um, as as like the focus in the town, but there are some streams leading into those waterways that would also be covered by river corridors.
Yeah, so the big one is, so there's kind of two pieces to river corridor too, there's like that full river corridor that I. Talked about that's delineated based on watershed size. And the uh, stream width. And then once you get into these smaller tributaries like. Kind of a lot of the stuff leading into Menden Brook, those watersheds are are smaller. And anything under a quarter square mile watershed has a fifty foot setback from the top of bank. So I think your major river corridors in Rutland town are going to be Menden Brook, East Creek and the Otter Creek. And then, uh. Probably a lot of the other ones are that fifty foot setback.
You know what we have, Kyle, uh, we've, we're, uh, we're part of our town is a MS four. And it's the Moon Brook watershed that comes out of Menden and Killington on the eastern side of our town. Um, and we have a set of of, we have an ordinance. That prohibits and regulates activities. You know, most of them fifty feet from from the Moon Brook. So how how do those, how would that fit? With a river cor- corridor bylaw or ordinance?
I mean, it sounds like it would be pretty synonymous because of the fifty foot, uh. Setback. So it'd be very similar, like the Moon Brook on that side of town, like it might have, it might just be a fifty foot setback. Yeah, I'm not fully sure, but, uh. Yeah, the the if you have a fifty foot setback on smaller streams, it would kind of be the same under the river corridor.
The fifty foot setback is just on the Moon Brook proper, I think.
So then.
There are some limitations.
Go ahead.
And there's some limitations on, you know, what you can do, like, you know, putting leaf debris and that kind of stuff. On some of the smaller tributaries. In that watershed.
Yeah, so on the smaller tributaries for our fifty foot setback, we call it a fifty foot no disturbance setback. But. I wouldn't think like putting a pile of leaves or something there is a big deal, I mean, even like a small like foot trail or. Or something like that, I mean, we tend to, in the river corridors, we tend to try to keep the, like, an established, like, planned path. Away from it. But, um. Yeah, that would be part of it, and then I think. The river corridor regulation piece, like in those bigger river corridors of the Otter Creek or the East Creek. Is if you have an existing building. You have fifty feet on the downstream side of that building. As a, you know, recognizing that there's already an encroachment there. And we can build off of that. It's really limiting those new encroachments, like you wouldn't want to put a brand new. Garage or building or something like that in there, uh. But if you have existing development there, you can add on to it, or so fifty feet on the downstream side. Or if there's another building within three hundred feet. That whole three hundred feet is kind of open for infill.
I I, you know, the Otter Creek, there's not much development along the Otter Creek, because. That is so sinuous, anyway, it's all over the place.
And and there's a lot of wetlands associated with. Around it, so, uh. Yeah, the Otter Creek. Is, uh, yeah, it's already.
The the East Creek, I see some existing structures in the river corridor. But just a few, there really aren't that many.
Yeah, yep. Yeah, like one that comes to mind is probably. Right on Route seven there, there's like that brick building across from the Green Mountain Power place, that's probably in the river corridor. Some stuff through there.
Yeah.
And then, yeah, maybe down in town too, there's some houses. Yeah, so I mean, that's. That's worth looking at, like what. You know, what's what's in these areas and what does this mean for us, like, is there areas that? Are looking to be developed, and do you want to protect that or accommodate that, or, you know, however. Whatever you guys think, because it is different in each town, like it deserves to be looked at, what exact areas are you concerned with? And that's things we've done too in the past is like, you know, all right, we're thinking about adopting river corridors. There's areas that you could say, all right, this is an infill area. It meets the standards, you know, it's not part of the river corridor. Things like that.
So Kyle, the select board, I think you were there that night, asked us to do some outreach on this. And and so for towns, other towns that you've worked with. What has, uh, worked the best? For outreach?
For outreach, um.
Just, yeah.
Yeah. I guess, uh, you can, if there's big landowners, like big farms, uh. People that would be affected in that way, kind of into. Uh, singularly identifying them. Um, I mean, it's really important for the whole town, because when. You have a disaster, everyone uses roads, everyone, you know, uses all these things that could be damaged, so. You're by protecting that, you're protecting people's way around the town and their tax dollars. So. It does affect individual property owners, but it really does have a big effect on, you know, basically anybody in the community that uses the transportation infrastructure.
Yeah, 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 to clarify what you were talking about with those rates. That's for disasters, but it's for municipal assistance, it's for the roads and the bridges and the culverts that get. It's not for individuals.
No, it's not for individuals, yeah. So, um. Yeah, that would be a big part of it, um. Yeah, so it's for federal disasters, but also for hazard mitigation. So like I said, if you have these higher standards and you're coming in, you know, with the town next to you that doesn't have the higher standards. You're technically going to get more points on your application to be selected for that funding. So if you're going for grants to improve your transportation, that. Infrastructure by having the higher standards, you would technically be more competitive. Depending on, you know, what the funding pool and. What the competition is at that point.
Yeah, and this new standalone that you're talking about, it's it's a. A slimmed down version a little bit, but it still meets FEMA standards and. Insurance.
Yeah, yeah, this was led by FEMA, um. Has been preapproved, so. Once we do go through this map update process, which is probably coming in the next. Five-ish years. This bylaw would be good to go. Um, and FEMA, you know, shouldn't have any questions about it, because the way that works is once the maps get updated, six months before that. Before the maps are released, they come to every town in the community and say, let me see your bylaws. And then they say, these are good, or these need work, and then. That could cause a lot of issues, because, you know, some towns take years to adopt the bylaws, so if you only have six months to do it. There could be some implications with your National Flood Insurance Program status. So working, being proactive and and getting a. Good bylaw in place now is beneficial in that way too.
You know, it was interesting when we were doing the, um, MS four work, the stormwater ordinance. And I remember one public meeting where, um, a resident said, why aren't we doing this for the whole town? So maybe we can. Maybe that's a a selling point here, have have you encountered this, any, there's not that many MS four towns in Vermont, but.
Yeah, I tend to not, you know, go too far down the stormwater route, that's kind of another. Sector of DEC. So I don't know too much about that. I guess, yeah. Go ahead.
No, go ahead.
No, I was just going to say, I'm not sure I'm I'm grasping what exactly the correlation between the MS four process and this process is.
Well, it's probably a good question, um, it was a. It was a an ordinance passed by the town as a requirement for MS four. But it only applied to a portion of the town, the Moon Brook watershed.
Okay. Yeah, so this would be, this like, it's kind of a, uh. All or nothing, whereas you're going. To the full map river corridors and then up to that quarter square mile drainage area. And then. Like I said, the only way to really amend that would be to. Proactively, before we look at it, say, hey, this area in Rutland town is looking to be developed, what do, and it's in the river corridor. Do we think that the river cor- corridor could be amended here, or is it a good area for infill? Kind of identifying those areas up front, so that when someone comes in with an application, it's like, well, it is in the river corridor, but we've already kind of discussed that. This area is okay. Does that make sense?
Uh, kind of.
Yeah, so like I said before, like, there's, you know, that three hundred foot infill, so if you have a building upstream. And then a building downstream. And they're three hundred feet or less apart. That area in the middle can be developed. So like I'm saying, instead of like. Oh, we adopted these regulations and then piecing that out as you get an application. You can be proactive and say, hey, these are the areas that are prime for infill in the river corridor. Or, uh, kind of like a preapproved location.
Yeah. Yeah, um, any other questions for Kyle?
Did I I have a question, did we have anything written on this before we saw it? I mean, uh, his present, the stuff that was presented. I I mean, uh, his present, the stuff that was presented, did we, do we have that in writing anywhere?
Well, um, I can get a copy of the standalone bylaw, uh, and I'm sure he would share his slides.
Yeah, I can share the slides. Um, and yeah, if you have any questions about that and the standalone bylaw, yeah, I would encourage you to kind of look through it and think about it and you know, see where it might impact you guys and see if it's a right fit for Rutland Town.
That's something we circulated to us.
If I can send it to Bill.
Right.
Yeah, okay. And and hopefully um we'll have some of your time to do some of the outreach.
Yeah, exactly. Like I said, I think maybe looking into the specific landowners. I don't know if there's any mailers you guys put out or you know, the newspaper, the websites, uh. Yeah, I mean, any, any way you guys garner the most attention to what you're putting out there, I would suggest putting it there.
Yeah, I mean, I'm toying with the idea of maybe getting, doing some onsite visits for the public and the landowners, just showing them where the river corridor would be.
Yeah, yeah, like I said, I think kind of in that Upper East Creek watershed, you have a lot of the big farms, so it would uh probably be beneficial to talk to those people. And like I said, it's not like we're prohibiting, you know, all uses or anything like that. It's mostly just trying to keep the insurable structures, the transportation infrastructure. Those types of things that really have implications when they get damaged out of that area.
Okay, well, thank you, Kyle, for joining us tonight.
Yeah, no problem.
Questions? Uh, there's one other person who's remote. Mary Beth, do you have anything?
No, I'm good.
Okay.
I'll make sense.
Thanks, Kyle.
Thank you, Kyle.
Yep, no problem, everybody. If you have any questions, just let me know, or if there's another meeting. You know, whatever, whatever you guys need, I'm around, so just let me know.
Great, great. Enjoy the rest of your evening.
Yep, you too. Thanks. Bye.
Are these uh maps pretty self-explanatory for everyone?
Yeah.
Yeah. We have such an odd-shaped town. And they put in the waterways, it's even hotter.
I've got to tell you with my colorblindness, trying to figure out which dot is a mobile home, other residential.
Uh, that, yeah, I think that's a problem for all of us. It's, you might be able to tell a little bit better on that big map form. If you're that interested.
Well, I think your idea of of some onsite uh informational meetings, you know, makes some sense, particularly in the areas that uh of the large farms and things of that nature, which he mentioned.
Well, I mean, there's, there's like some colonial estates is in the river corridor. Um, and it looks like maybe some of them are courier buildings might be or real close. Do you, does everybody see that? Up on, off the uh East Pittsburgh Road?
Those colonial estates is really high up from the river for the most.
It's gotta be, it's gotta be.
It's just that one Howard that goes down, the real steep one. Remember all the problems with the road?
Amanda.
Yeah, Amanda, down at the end of Amanda's right down kind of low.
Yeah.
The only one. If you walk up to the to the reservoir, have you ever walked up to there? There's a few houses on the left that are, that are really
Like right on the, right on the.
Yes. Walk up through Northwood Park and go back around.
Yeah.
And
Yeah.
My daughter loves to walk there and I've walked with her and I look at that. I hope those people got life rafts.
But the uh, but most of the, most of that other stuff's way up, even though it's right, it's close, it's steep.
So some towns have more of an issue with the streams, but most of the streams here are in very undeveloped areas, except for Moon Brook. We already have the ordinance for that.
Uh, in Moon Brook, there's some close buildings along Moon Brook, you get out to um. Yeah, I I know, Moon Brook, there are some, a lot of stuff been going on out there, too. Way out, uh. In the end of it, it's it's still some stuff. If there's anything close, I think it's out there, out at, and that Moon Brook part. And what's the street that goes out there? It's uh Oh, Perkins Road. So at the, out the end of Perkins Road, we get into, there's a couple of other streets and there's been some development that's gone on out there in the last couple of years and and some earth moving and things that, you know, stuff that's gone on, it's pretty darn close to that brook.
Yeah. Yeah, so, you know, maybe, you know, a conversation about this stuff is is good, would be good for the town. I asked Kyle, he didn't have time to put um some numbers together um for um, just for an example, like Brandon, what, like with Tropical Storm Irene, how much money would they have saved if they had river corridors? And they put in river corridors after Tropical Storm Irene. So he's going to put those numbers together. The select board has asked for some numbers like that, too. Um, just that five percent difference, you know, on a big storm can make a huge difference of what the town has to shell out. Um, so everybody's still okay with us proceeding and seeing where this goes?
Mm-hmm, yep.
Okay.
Seems to make sense.
Yeah.
Ten dollars, too.
Norm just woke up and we're all falling asleep. Okay, um, back down to old business, um, so we took care of V L C T.
Yep.
Um, and pretty much the subdivision ordinance, we've got our
We should say a few words just because we're on camera, but other than that.
Okay.
So.
Going to compile.
Uh, right. So everybody should have received a a copy of my um annotated agenda. Um, and on that, I have listed the things that we need, still need to look at. Uh, among those, there are, um there are uh three or four areas for discussion. The rest are all uh citations, statutory citations. Um, and uh Barbara made a suggestion earlier that with the statutory references, we just submit that to the uh attorney, either a V um V L C T attorney or our town attorney uh to look at those and clarify them and help us to have the right references. Because in my uh work, my research on that, I found uh some that reference things that don't exist um or have been repealed since uh these um were last updated, excuse me, this, this ordinance was last updated in ninety-nine. There are multiple things that have uh had um updates, multiple uh sections within the statutes that have been updated since two thousand three, two thousand four, two thousand seven, um, et cetera. Uh, so I've tried to capture and distill down as much of the essence on that annotated agenda as possible. And uh that could be, I guess, submitted to the town attorney. Once we have uh finished with our discussion, we have four more areas. Um, uh, two of which are in uh two point oh seven and then one each in uh four point one three and two point oh one. Uh, that way we could uh formulate questions for the town attorney. At that point in time, I think Bill, uh, that document with appropriate annotations such as these, we could then send to one of those attorneys for comment.
Yep.
So.
Okay, so do you need another meeting?
We, I I think it would be important to be a lot shorter, because we're not going to be going over all of the statutory references, I think. Uh, but there are four things that we needed to discuss in terms of where we are at. Either with respect to we need to ask a question of the uh of an attorney somewhere or we we don't and we can resolve that. So I think that that's th- those four questions are the only ones that are, I can pull those out of this and move it to the um February sixth agenda or some other time. It could even happen perhaps at one of these meetings, because I don't think that that would be very time consuming, but you never know. So that's that's entirely up to the pleasure of the group.
I think it would be most efficient if you just could segregate the four sections that you want us you want the subcommittee to look at. And just get them on a sheet or two of paper.
But they're already on this annotated document. I can pull those out.
Yeah.
But they're already on here, because what I did was a comprehensive list of anything that we had not yet discussed.
Okay.
Most of those, uh, the majority, eighty percent, perhaps even eighty-five percent, were references. And then I did the, I did the preliminary um check. And then I found that it was getting complicated and there were references that just didn't either make sense or they didn't clarify what they were sup- the paragraph that they were embedded in.
Yeah. So pull, pull the four out. So I guess the question is now to whether to address that in the committee or this group as a whole.
Doesn't matter to me. I don't, I don't have a preference one way or the other.
Who's, who's left on the committee?
Well, I, Jerry. I don't know if, Andy, were you on?
No, I was the only, I've been there, but not, yeah, I'm not a member.
So we can do it here, if you want, next time.
Yeah. Okay, sounds good to me.
So put it on the agenda for a half hour discussion or something? Okay.
Twenty minutes?
Uh, yeah, I was gonna say twenty minutes, but uh, given the way we sometimes talk about things, I'd uh
Don't be surprised if you see twenty minutes on the agenda.
I I'd rather have, I'd rather have thirty minutes allocated and we finish early, but that's okay, either way.
What she's saying is twenty goes to thirty and thirty goes to forty. So if you keep it to twenty, yeah. If I'm reading her correctly.
Am I that transparent? Yep. Okay, thanks, Dana. Um, the rules of procedure um are are complete. Uh, we talked about them going, being, having them take effect after town meeting day, much like what the select board does.
Right.
With its timing. Um, that doesn't mean we can't pass them tonight and make them effective sometime in March. So.
And the other que, I mean, if if people want to look at it now to make sure that it's what they want, then that's fine, too. Just you entirely. I I have executed all of the tasks that have been.
Yeah, a- a- and and the most recent task, we're formatting.
Yep, and and making sure that the shells, if if you want me to make comments about the shells and the wells and uh other things, I can do that, but that's pretty much minutia, so.
Does, does, does the group want to look at these one last time before we vote on them? Or you can always change them.
You can always change them.
You can act on them tonight if you want. Is there a motion?
There are a lot of discussions.
I'm okay with whatever the group wants to do.
There are emotions? Uh, Bill, what what date in March would you give this to be effective?
Uh, the town meeting is March seven.
Yeah.
Voting, voting day is March seventh and
The select board usually appoints us.
On March ninth.
So the select board meeting is when?
It would be after the ninth, right? Their reorganization?
Or the board meeting, the reorganization meeting will be the fourteenth.
And so we meet on the ninth and then we meet again on the uh thirtieth. So I think we should go with the thirtieth. I think Barbara, you and I had talked about this, or maybe I talked about it with Mary. If we set uh an effective date of the thirtieth, then the select board can make sure that the the uh planning commission is reconstituted if need be. I mean, otherwise.
Yeah.
And then that would, that would take place effective for the thirtieth, because they meet on the fourteenth.
Okay, yeah, gives us a little leeway.
So then this would.
So is there a motion or or not for this meeting? Not hearing.
Well, self-serving if I make the motion, so I'm not.
I'll make it. Self-serving or not, it doesn't matter.
So so I'll move that we uh we approve the planning commission rules of procedure as presented tonight.
Effective.
Effective March thirtieth, is that what you're saying?
I'll say.
Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Close?
I.
Okay, unanimous. And Bill, are you looking for everyone to sign this? There's lots of lines in that signature area.
I think Dana included one line for everybody to sign, so that's up to you all if you want to have it, so.
Would you like that now? Should we do that now?
Yeah. Let's, uh, Jerry, why don't you start? Yeah.
I'm gonna sign on the last line.
Gonna sign on the middle line then.
And do you need another copy?
No.
We'll have to sign it separately.
You'll have to make a trip in sometime, that's right, Norm.
Unless she wants, unless to sign it for her, sign her name.
Look, yeah, we'll have the lawyer do that, the ex-lawyer.
I have your authority to sign your name. No, seriously, no. That's okay.
I'll come in, I live nearby.
Okay. I don't trust you either.
I know, but is there a date on there for the signature?
Yeah, there is. They adopted this twenty-sixth day of January.
Right, great, good, perfect.
Comprehensive revised draft presented the twenty-sixth. I tried to be as complete as possible. Oh, here you go.
The foresight, Dana, wow.
That's what it, that's what you get when you retire.
One of these days.
Yeah, one of these days.
So it's, well, that's circulating, um.
Just gonna sign or? I don't sign, because I'm not. You're gonna come in and sign this?
Okay, you have to sign for yourself, Norman, because there are only seven voting members tonight.
So I I I think everyone should sign the rules of procedure regardless.
Okay.
Not, not like voting on a motion.
Just sign for, oh, next to juries.
This, this applies to all of us.
Oh, I see. Actually, that's right, Norman isn't voting because Howard.
Yeah.
Really, Jim Hall?
He's alone on the left.
Yeah.
Sorry, I only put seven lines in for the.
Rewrites the whole thing?
Yeah. Thanks, Jerry, I really appreciate it.
I don't feel right, I don't know if I'd follow procedure without having a line.
Give that to Bill, no?
Yeah, Bill, I'll give it to Bill. Thank you.
Thanks, Norman.
Yep, yep. Okay, so um not much else here on the agenda, pocket park, um. We're still waiting for an M O U from Green Mountain Power. Hopefully we'll get one by the end of the month. But they say they are still pretty preoccupied with the relicensing. Um, but once we get that, that would just, that would give us the um the authority to keep moving on this and actually getting some stuff done, so really trying to push that.
When you mentioned the end of the month, are you talking about this?
End of January, yeah. Hopefully.
Okay, great.
Any announcements? Oh, I'm sorry, Sherman?
No, I was just saying. No, I was just saying it's not far away if it's the end of the month.
Yeah. Any announcements? News? Um, we give our best to Jim and, uh, hope he has, he recovers from his, his latest, um, issues that he's experiencing. Okay, approval of the January fifth minutes.
Who to approve?
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Norm.
I, I just had one suggestion, I don't know if it's a correction, under new business number three. The second sentence. It says parcel B is undeveloped. I thought what they said would, or would read better would be parcel B will remain undeveloped.
It may not. I don't think that's right. It may not remain undeveloped. So I don't think that that's correct, I think it's
Oh, okay, because you. But I, I thought he used the term. But I can understand what you're saying is that would be indefinitely, and that's not what.
Right, exactly.
Yep.
I mean, there's a reason why they're subdividing.
Right, right, I, I mean, I, I, you know, I, I'm sure there's a greater plan there.
Yeah.
And Norm, that just, that particular part of that discussion was describing the two parcels. Parcel A has structures, parcel B is undeveloped. It was a discussion describing the parcels as they will exist.
Right, I think, I think it needs to be left the way it is.
Yeah, yeah, I agree, I agree.
Anything else, Norm?
No.
And, okay. So we have a motion and a second to approve minutes. Um, there was, go to the question, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Pose?
And I, I'm not standing there, I wasn't.
We want extension? Okay. So, uh, we're ready to have someone move to adjourn. Good meeting, everyone.
Thanks.
Vote for a judge, second.
Okay. We're adjourned, thank you.